All right. Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started with roll call. Council, make sure you're all logged in too, please.
Thank you.
Mayor LaBarra.
Present.
Mayor Protim Case.
Here, thank you.
Councilmember Connors.
Here, thank you.
Councilmember Nakai.
Here.
Councilmember Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Ott is absent, and Councilmember Zuluwada.
Uh, here, thanks for asking.
President of the United States of America and the Republic, which expands one nation under our two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
All right, this evening, we are going to start with ceremonies, presentations, and appointments, and we have a presentation from the U.P.A.S. Historical Society, and we have Donna and Patricia here to present.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Donna Finical. I'm the president of the U.P.A.S. Historical Society. With me tonight is Pat Isle. She is a board member, and she's also in charge of educational activities in our society. We want to talk to you a little bit about the Historical Society and our museum, which we call History Park. It's located right behind the library. The address is 231 East Henrietta. The hours that we have are Wednesdays from ten to twelve, Thursday through Saturday from eleven to three. We are a organization that is supported by the city. The city helps maintain it partially. The city helps maintain the grounds and the buildings. Our society was established in nineteen seventy-six by three women. You may know some of you here may know them. It was Jan Pettit, Sandy Lampy, and Mary Ann Davis, who's now deceased. They were doing a local oral history project with a library here in Cascade, and they discovered that we had a lot of very interesting people up here and a very interesting history. So they decided that we needed to have a Historical Society so that we could then start to remember some of that history. It is an all-volunteer organization. We, except for, we have one part-time employee, the gift shop manager, and we have two contract employees that help us manage our collection and our finances. Our, our, our area includes Cascade, Chappeta Park, Green Mountain Falls, Willam Park, and Divide. We have approximately a hundred and twenty-four patrons. And the mission is so, okay, the mission is to preserve, share, and protect the history of the U.P.A.S. area. In order to accomplish this mission, we keep oral histories. We have about two hundred of them. We help preserve and collect historical artifacts. We have information about families, towns, events, and a special collection about Ute Indians, and we also keep a lot of historical newspapers. We have about five thousand historic photos, and we also are able to do reprints of those. We have a gift shop bookstore that is managed by Judy Perkins that travels around to different towns and different events selling our books, including Colorado Springs. We are, one of our biggest events is tourist season in Green Mountain Falls, where we do book sales from the land office, which is our building by the lake. Okay, we manage History Park, which is our museum, and it consists of seven buildings with historical exhibits in every one of the buildings, except one. The outhouse. We, it's a historical outhouse from the Divide Community Center built in nineteen twenty, and we couldn't find the Sears catalog. Okay, so okay, so these, the location of History Park is right behind the library, and we do tours of History Park year-round with volunteer docents, and we have another big tour that we do, which is Mary Green Pines. We also have, Pat reminds me to tell you that we have eight hundred-plus visitors a year between all of the things that we do. The Mary Green Pines, when some of you may have been to it or heard about it, but it's a historic mansion that's across from Cascade. It's, it was started by one of the first billboard sign persons in the U.S. He felt, came out here and fell in love with this area, and so he built this cottage for his wife, and then he built this beautiful mansion, furnished with the best of everything from Europe. So it is in his will for us to have permission to open it up every three years, and it's a great home tour. Generates a lot of money for us, and everyone, I think all of us love that place. In order to share the history of the area, we do other things that, such as, we have a website, we have a Facebook page, and a quarterly newsletter. We also do quarterly exhibits at the library. We have written four books about the history of the area, and we do special programs, including Potato Soup Supper every year in Divide. It's an annual thing to remember the agricultural history of our area. I bet some of you don't know that we used to raise lettuce and potatoes up here at an elevation of eighty-seven hundred feet. It's very possible, it was amazing how successful it was until the fifties, when the climate changed. We also do a cemetery crawl every Fourth of July, and that's another place where there's a lot of history. From the eighteen hundreds on, there, there are people buried there who have great stories to tell. So in the cemetery crawl, we like to tell some of those stories. And some of the, some of the names that come to mind, some of you may know these names, some of you may not. Perhaps you know Bert Bergstrom? Bergstrom? Alberta Burns, and the Baldwin Brothers are the three people that come to mind, and we always do them every year because they're very special, interesting people. Bert Bergstrom, you know, had the Ute Inn. When he came here, it was in the forties. He had been, come originally from San Francisco through Cripple Creek, and then he ended up in Willam Park in nineteen forty-six. He had casinos. The preschool in the pines and the Thunderhead Ranch both were his casinos. Did you know that, did you, I hope that you know that during the forties, this place in Willam Park was a hopping, lively place. We had gambling. We had women from Las Vegas. And we had white lightning during prohibition. You know, there were stills in these hills. Lots of them. Okay, so Bert was best known for his UTRL Stampede. He's the one that started it. He donated land for it, did the buildings for it. He participated in it. He, it was a fabulous rodeo that people came from all over the country to participate in. It lasted for twenty or thirty years, and then it declined. However, we have a business person here, a person who owns a business here, who was a rodeo queen. Do you know who that might be?
Yes.
Mary Jo Larson, and Mary Jo is trying to revive the UTRL Stampede, they must say. Okay, the other thing that, that we remember in that cemetery, the other people are the Baldwin Brothers. Just a note about them. They were Union soldiers who came out here after the end of the Civil War, and the graveyard and the road, the road by McDonald's is called Baldwin after them. The graveyard was part of their property, and the oldest brother Moses was captured by the Confederates, and he spent several years in the Andersonville Prisoner of War camp. And that was a very famous, infamous camp where you didn't really get out of there unless you died. But he was traded for Confederate officer, because he was an officer, and managed to get out of there. And then not long after that, he and his brother and their families all came out here to homestead over where the graveyard is. So we thought that those were some, just some of the few, of the very interesting stories that you will find in our local graveyard. The other thing that we do is a, an annual school tour, and it's to help the students up here in the second grade meet the requirements for history. Pat is in charge of that, and she's going to tell you a little bit more about that and show you a film, which she shows the students. It's a little history lesson.
Hello. So yes, I was formerly a teacher, and so when I came here and learned about our great history, I want to be part of sharing it with our students. As a teacher, the first thing I did was go to the social studies standards, so I made sure that our field trip did hit some of the things that were important for the students to learn. We do do second grade. Fourth grade, I think, is the other grade. They focus on local history, but those second graders are so darn cute. So what I, we have seven stations, well, hopefully eight this year, because we're going to try and include a T.P. and some native Utes. We bring the kids through. Columbine has been coming for years. They walk over in the morning, and then they do the tour, have lunch, and go home, go back to school. This year, I have already have booked ninety students from Summit and Columbine. They'll come over on May fifth. So if you guys want to come and see some cute, fun things going on, come by and see. It's in the morning, nine-thirty to eleven. So part of the history is, I do teach kind of the history of also not just how we became the town we are, but also what supported the town. So I'm just going to give you a real quick history, okay? So first of all, U.P.A.S. came from the Utes, and so here we have a picture of the Utes with Chief Urain. Then, from that same pass up the mountains, came the pioneers, and we hear we have them on their wagon train. Then came the railroad, the Midland Railroad, and that's what really put Willam Park on the map, because we were chosen to be one of the stops on the railroad, and that railroad, of course, went off to the gold mines, Cripple Creek and around. This is a picture of the town back in the day, and I think the forest building over is the Moses Baldwins, the brothers' store, and that is where this town was originated. They took the boat in that store to incorporate this town. A logging was one of the first big industries in this town, because Woodland Park was named Woodland Park for a reason. We had lots of wood. That wood was timbered, and this is near where Vector Bank would have been today. You can see it's all ready to get loaded on the rails. It went to the mines to short the mine shafts. It went to the railroad to lay ties, and then it went to the springs to build the mansion for all the rich people from all the gold. Also, like Donna pointed out, back in the day, Divide was famous for their potatoes, and Steve Plute does a great presentation, if you know him, and he shows you, those potatoes were huge. They were better than Idaho potatoes, and also the lettuce was famous. And that lettuce made its way all the way to places like Chicago and New York, because it was put on the train with another thing that was harvested here, which was ice. We had ice factories in Lake George and Lake Colson. So you throw that ice on the train with the lettuce, and it can go all the way to New York. Another thing we were famous for is day excursions from Colorado Springs. They put on their Sunday best, hop on the train, come up to Woodland Park, and gather wildflowers. That's no longer legal. But, um, so they would come and get their big bouquet of wildflowers for the day. As we civilized our town, of course, churches were important. This is the, I believe, a Methodist church, question me if I'm wrong. Still standing here in town. Schools were important. We improved a bit. I think this one was up on the Rampart Range, right? The Spillman School, I believe, was called. Also, we had big fancy hotels. Unfortunately, almost all of them burnt down, but this one was, we believe, the Stanley Hotel. And in this picture, you can see the Stanley Hotel's up there in the corner, and that once again is Main Street.
About hotels, we had a two-hundred-room hotel, the Ramona in Cascade, Miss Brother Welby. You change, women change several times a day for various reasons.
Very sensitive. And the big draw for Woodland Park was what it is today. It's the beauty, it's the nature, it's the clean air, and that's what drew people, especially from back in the day when everybody was burning coal. The cities were a hard place to be. The air was very polluted, and so, and there was a big problem with tuberculosis, so a lot of people came up to Woodland Park for the clean living.
Also, they wanted to experience the wet, wild west in comfort.
So when I show this slideshow, I don't show all these slides to the kids, but when I show this slide, I ask them, "So this is the beginning of the end of the Midland Railroad. Can you tell me what brought the railroad down?" That's right, automobiles. So in our automobile age, there's that historic Ute Inn back in the day, and you also recognize this, the Cowhand. Still there today, both of those businesses. And then, like we said, Bert Bergstrom brought the U.P.A.S. Stampede Rodeo, very popular. You can see this was one of the earlier arenas, and I believe that was on this site. And what they would do is they would just line up the cars to form the arena, and when it got dark, they'd just turn their headlights on. There's some story about some bull breaking loose and jumping over the cars and sending everybody baskets, picnic baskets flying and stuff, but those are one of those good times. This is my absolute favorite picture from one of the rodeos. I think this guy needs to be on a T-shirt saying, "Whipping it up in Woodland Park." This guy is, I believe it's called, is it, it's a bulldogging. He's bulldogging, I believe, is what he's doing. Interesting choice in hat.
Not like the western ones.
Now, we talked about the mystique of the West, so people came up here, like I said, and they started dude ranching. That became a big industry up here, was dude ranches. We had them all over the place. Here we have the Brockhurst Dude Ranch was in Green Mountain Falls, the Triple B, which is the one dude ranch that is still in operation up here. El Rancho Tahuas became the Quarter Circle H. That was a ranch started by two Jewish lawyers. They were married Jewish lawyers, and they wanted to build character, and they would recruit young Jewish kids from New York and Chicago and places like that. And then this was one of the culminations of the season, was the big Stampede rodeo, and they would have a great big parade down Main Street. And this brings me to the end of your history lesson.
So after COVID, where we had a couple of years of not being able to do anything, go anywhere, we decided that we better start looking at some other ways to reach people. You know, they could no longer, if they that would be one way that we could have a wider audience, a younger audience, and that we could have more exposure about our history. So right after COVID, a year or two ago, we did a film, the first film we did was about raising lettuce and potatoes in our area. We did that because we couldn't do our annual potato soup supper, and so we thought we'd go ahead and do a film so that they could at least see something about that event on film. The next film that we did, which we just finished, is Dude Ranches Above the Clouds. As Pat talked about, we had a bunch of them up here. We actually had one person, we had suitcases full of actual film from their dude ranch years. So we did this film, we just finished it, and we're hoping that we will be able to show it at a theater near you. Soon, we hope, and so Pat's going to show you a little trailer about that film in a few minutes. I want to say a couple more words. So our, our vision is to have increased heritage tourism up here with our films, our tours, and our books, and a more online exposure. We want people to remember our history. We think that remembering history gives you a sense of community, and it helps you with your, your identity, and it also helps you understand how towns developed, like our town. And I, I wanted to say to you in the city council is that you are part of our history. You, with your decisions and your actions, you are now shaping the future of our town, and this is going to be the history for our future generations. So now I think you can show that trailer.
Exactly, so. Pat, it is. Sarah, Sarah. There should be some.
Sounds.
I know, it sounds weird.
It looks like it's all, it's supposed to be silent.
Anyway, imagine, imagine Western cowboy music. I'm not going to play the sound.
Looks beautiful.
I know, I can do this sound off my laptop.
Kristin, yeah, Kristin has on, you want to put your microphone by Kristin, maybe?
Do you want her to start it or so you can synchronize it? Sorry. So tell her where to start. Or I guess you'll see when she starts. Ready?
Tell her where to start. Or I guess.
Come around. It's beautiful.
Come around.
Larry.
Little mini Switzerland for us. We can't get to Switzerland, but we can get to Colorado and the cool air of the summer and stay a couple weeks, stay a month.
It was a large, part of this was the fresh air, the fresh food, the spring water.
I was already writing, but I made it my plan that I was going to marry, marry a cowboy, because I was going to live on ranches.
Very nice.
Oh, she's getting a map.
Yeah, so we wanted to leave you with a little bit of our history, and so I think Kelly has already passed out the book that we did about and thank you for listening to our story.
Donna, I have only one question for you. Donna, I have only one question for you. Where are we in the cycle of the Mary Green House tours? So three years from now, all right.
And Council, if I may add, Donna has graciously extended an invitation to the entire council to do a personal tour of History Park, so I would like to get that organized for you guys.
That's very nice. Thank you, and thank you very much for the book, too.
Yes, thank you. I have one question I missed on May fifth, from nine-thirty to eleven. Where's that going to be at?
History Park.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, ladies. That was very nice. All right, we are off to four. We have nothing, five consent calendar. We have approval of construction management services, and I don't see Ben here.
He's on Zoom.
Very.
Can't get any bigger than that.
Thanks, good evening. So this contract is for the construction management services, which is one part of that intergovernmental agreement that we have with C.D.O.T. for use of the federal funds. This, this was our twenty-five percent match for the improvements along Highway sixty-seven. So this construction management portion is basically for the full-time observation of the project and the project management. While I'd love to say I have capacity to do this, this full project, I would, this would be my full-time job, so that's what we're asking for help for, and just a reminder that this is a time and materials not to exceed, so it may not go up to that full amount, but we just wanted to make sure we have the budget in there to cover it and cover all the federal requirements, so we can make sure we're, we're meeting everything that we need to do for this project.
Very good. Counsel, are there questions, or can I get a motion?
I have a question. How is this a consent calendar item and not something that's on a
It's budgeted in it.
Well, yeah, well, the contractor, what, how come that's not on for something for us to consider, or have we already? I may have been dismissing something.
Yeah, it's a budgeted item.
But the contract is, don't we know?
No, the contract is not the budget. The work was
So you're just requiring, you're just requesting budget? I'm sorry, I'm just, it just, I'm just wondering why it's here on a calendar and not somewhere else. Can you just explain that?
That's where we do.
We do contracts.
That's where we do contracts.
Normally, we, but normally, we
We did several last night. Did Michael answer for you?
Yeah, well, you want to tell everyone?
So it's, it's on consent agenda because the, you all appropriated funds for the budget for twenty-twenty-three, and that would include road projects, and this is associated with road projects in the four-ten fund. And so, because in a sense you already approved the appropriation through the budget, you have just the contract, which you are required to approve contracts of certain amounts. So that's why it's here under consent as opposed to elsewhere.
Well, I, I get those parts. I guess what I'm just not clear about is normally we give the contract, we get a review of the contract, and it's, that's the approval process, so can someone else see what's different about this and what we normally get a contract, which we look at and approve?
The contract was
It was in the packet. No, no, he means, I understand what your question is.
Okay, thanks.
So sometimes there are contracts that we have never seen before, and it will be for an amount that we have not already appropriated, and so it will go under a different topic on the agenda.
Okay.
And because this is something we were already aware of, and then we had already pre-approved the amounts for, that's why it's on consent, because staff is expecting that we would approve it, because we were already familiar with it.
Okay. I think Ben, Ben has his hand up as well.
Yeah, Ben, please.
Go ahead, Ben.
Sorry, one other point of clarity, too. So this was part of our on-call engineering contract that we selected through the request for qualifications process that was approved earlier this year to, in the January council meeting. So that whole contract was the, the on-call, and this is just essentially a task order under that contract.
Now I get it. Yeah, I remember that. Thank you.
Yeah, I got your question.
Yeah, yeah, okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know, I totally understood why you're asking.
Okay, good. All right. So if you needed somebody to move to approve, I still move.
I'll make a motion and approval. So I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I just made it.
Oh, you, yeah.
I'll second.
I'm still hearing your question. Sorry, sorry.
I'll second.
Thank you, Counsel. You may vote. Thank you, Counsel. A motion has passed six-zero unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
All right, we are off to item six, and I will check All right, we are off to item six, and I will check with Suzanne to see what we have for that.
Yes, mayor, this evening we have three speakers. The first is one that we received online, and it's Mary Sikowski.
Hi, good evening. Mary Sikowski, Woodland Park resident. Just wanted to thank mayor, mayor pro temp, and the rest of the council members for the time that you put into the discussion and the work session for the short-term rental topic. I had a really good meeting with a couple of leaders on the Protecting Residential Property Rights Group today. We, I think, made some really good headway on our common ground. And I'm really excited to know that most of ordinance fourteen thirty-one, as it was presented, is common ground with a few exceptions, which I think Arnie might speak to. But a couple of things that I did want to bring up, since there was a question on the statistics of Woodland Park residents. Just encrunching the numbers from the permits that are out there, you know, I know the city's gonna pull the hard data. But forty-five point seven percent of the permit holders for short-term rentals have Woodland Park mailing addresses. I think we can presume that most of those are either primary residence owners or Woodland Park citizens. Sixty-four point three percent of the permit holders are, are owners in this region. So divide, you know, Teller County, Green Mountain Falls Cascade, and into Colorado Springs. And then the rest would be outside that area. So I think it's important to note in that, that, you know, there's some really important local stakeholders, regardless of the decisions and how this moves for, moves forward, that are local citizens here in Teller County. I also wanted to, to bring up something that we talked about today, and it was, and it's because it's often brought up, and Kelly, you brought it up with the survey that was done. Interestingly enough, and I left my phone back there, I wanted to have the picture of all the, the options. If you notice, the fourth option down on that survey, which was sixty-four, sixty-four votes in the survey out of three hundred and twenty-five, we're not concerned about short-term rentals at all. So I don't know if anybody noticed that. The, the first was community character. There was noise and parking, all of which can be greatly addressed through the good regulation as was presented in fourteen thirty-one. So I just thought that was interesting. I had never seen that before. I went back to look after our discussion this morning, and I noticed that and thought to myself, wow, sixty-four, we're not concerned. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Suzanne, is there anyone else?
Yes, we have Arnie Sparnins. And then one more, your mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, unenrolled mayor, city council. My name's Arnie Sparnins. I live in Sonny Glen. And so rather than using a phone, I use a, a bigger iPad so you can call up. You know, so you can see, you know, people had a question as to what that looked like. You know, the question was, what concerns do you have with many of the short-term rentals in Woodland Park? Ninety-six for community character, another eighty-five for noise and partying, and seventy-six for traffic and park, parking, and then no concerns of sixty-four. So community character is still number one, but we never talk about number two, you know, which is noise and partying, and number three, which is traffic and parking. And worth noting that too, a lot of times when people respond to, well, you know, they misunderstand community character to be the noise and partying or the traffic and parking. No, community character is exactly as it's defined. It's not defined. And that's the thing that people need to remember in the survey. The survey is an open-ended question, but what concerns do you have? And then the city, you know, as they aggregate the responses, they categorize certain types of responses into what constitutes community character. So it's not people saying, yeah, I agree, community character or not. It's, you know, they, they define it for you. So if you really want to know what people mean when they say that's their leading concern with STRs, you need to read all the individual responses. You know, the way it's summarized in here, it says responses that mention the lack of neighbor, neighborliness, degradation of neighborhoods, interruption to daily life, or discomfort, anxiety of not knowing neighbors. And so that's community, you know, community character as defined, you know, by, by the respondents and as listed as the number one concern out there. So worth noting, I think, as you look at your legislation, just, you know, please consider that input as that input is. Because that itself is, is, that's what people, you know, and it's an emotional thing. It's not a, a data thing. There's not data around this as, you know, I'm, I'm eight point four in terms of how this irritates me or upsets me. It's, it's, it's an emotional feeling, but it's the feeling that people that live here, my house is an emotional thing for me. You know, and, and my peace and comfort, you know, is exactly what that is there. So. The other thing I wanted to bring up real quickly, as we get into this process, is just, you know, request that the city council limit the conversation in STRs, you know, to really discussing policy. And because, you know, heard a lot of casual tossing around of some legal threats, you know, scare tactics. And, you know, even go back, and I think, you know, go back and review the video and count how many times the term regulatory taking was used. And so, you know, if the city has concerns about any, any actions that the city does, whether that creates legal exposure or something like that, you know, I'd request that, you know, you have an attorney, you know, prepare a review of relevant case law and, and brief and prep the city on that rather than council members casually using terms that have very serious consequences out there, and especially if they're misused or misunderstood. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Arnie.
Jerry Penland.
My name's Jerry Penland, Master's Drive. Why do we have up to nine technical experts on planning commission as our charter allows? That's way too many experts to do the job. In a small city, it certainly doesn't take nine technical experts to serve as an advisory agency to assist the city council in providing for the orderly development of the city in Woodland Park. From prior, prior experience, in five years as planning commissioner, you know that I could be considered a planning technical expert. However, after a couple of planning commission meetings, it was clear that I had a gap in the knowledge I needed to be effective. Only needed to be a resident for at least a year. With three years here, I certainly met that requirement. So what was the gap? I wasn't a long-term resident and didn't really know the character of the city and its residents. Looking around at a diverse group at that time on planning commission, I found out how to fill that gap. When a decision came up, I listened closely to a long-term resident who usually sat beside me right up there during planning commission meetings. Was she a technical expert? Absolutely not. She was a mid-level supervisor working at Walmart. What she brought to the table was the voice of the citizens. Again, why do we have nine seats on planning commission? Is it so we can have nine technical experts? Absolutely not. In my career, I supervised around five hundred engineers and scientists. If you want a technical solution, nine technical expert can certainly give you one. However, if you want a planning solution that will blend in and fit the character of the city and its residents, you need a diverse group of planning commissioners. I totally agree. We need some technical experts. However, we also need folks who bring the voice of the people to the table when making planning decisions. My time as a planning commissioner was with an extremely diverse group. I don't believe our chairman was a trained technical planning expert, but he was an effective chairman. Some of our commissioners were not technical experts, but we were an effective team. Tonight, I ask you to do some inward reflection, doing some serious thinking about exactly the type of diversity we need to fill nine seats on our planning commission. Even city council only has seven seats. If all we need are technical experts, maybe we drop the numbers and plan down only five. Surely we could keep five seats filled. The obvious question that should be asked along with this discussion is, why do we have a problem here in Woodland Park, keeping our volunteer committees and boards filled when we have volunteers who want to serve? Thank you.
Thank you.
Suzanne, is there anyone else or just?
No, ma'am.
No one online?
Okay.
All right, we are off to eight ordinances on initial postings. We have eight A's, consideration of fourteen forty-one. And Karen's presenting.
Good evening. This first ordinance in front of you this evening is, relates to a special use permit for Verizon Wireless for a temporary communication site. Council may recall that this past year, basically it was in August, in association with the Salute to American Veterans Rally, where a, where Verizon situated a cell-on-wheels facility in the parking lot here in the north side of City Hall. That was done through a temporary use permit process, since that was going to appear on a temporary basis. And that largely came about due to concerns with cell coverage and that need to make sure that we had adequate voice access for folks to take care of any potential emergencies that might occur. After the rally was concluded, that temporary use permit was extended through the end of the year. That asset has since been removed, and Verizon has relocated it to some other community needs. But they still have the issue with providing adequate cell coverage here in Woodland Park. And they are in the process of trying to find a more permanent macro site. But during that time period that it takes to get a permanent site up and operational, they are asking to have what they call a light site, L I T E, redeployed back here behind City Hall. Because the height of the light site exceeds fifty feet, that is what triggers the need for a special use permit. So that has already been through planning commission. And consistent with the code, city council then needs to hear and pass an ordinance related to a special use command. So with that background information, staff this evening is asking city council to approve on initial posting ordinance number fourteen forty-one, series twenty twenty-three. This is an ordinance that would grant a special use permit with cycling reviews for the purposes of Verizon to construct and utilize a temporary communication facility in the public slash semi-public lands zone and set the public hearing for March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Counsel, questions or comments? Just. Just feel your motion. Oh, I'm sorry, we're on initial posting. I usually emphasize it.
Yeah.
Wake up, Hillary. I'm awake. Just kidding, I'm not. Can I have a motion, please?
It's an initial post. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance fourteen forty-one, series twenty twenty-three, as presented by planning staff, and set the public hearing for March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Counsel, you may vote. Maybe her. Thank you, counsel. Motion is passed six zero unanimously.
All right, we'll just move on to item B of fourteen forty-two.
Okay, this particular request relates to the land area over by Walmart that this property is all zoned as part of a planned unit development. It was split into six lots and four tracts, and it was those six lots that are to be developed with a variety of commercial uses. Lot one contains the Walmart. And it's actually lot four that is the topic of this particular request. The use that was originally specified for lot four was an eating slash drinking place, eat-in and drive-through. And so the applicant here, Seven B Building and Development, they would like to amend that PUD to also allow for that site to, instead of the eating and drinking establishment, be developed with an automated express style car wash. And so they're looking for that to be added so that the site could potentially be developed with one or the other. And because there is a change in parking, that's a dimensional standard, and that's really what city council is concerned with. If it was just a use, that would have stopped at the, the planning commission. Hopefully I got that right. So here before you this evening, staff is asking for you, for council to approve on initial posting ordinance number fourteen forty-two, series twenty twenty-three. This is an ordinance amending the PUD for the property located in the Walmart PUD with a legal description of lot four Walmart Center to amend the allowed use and dimensional standards to also include an automated express style car wash and set the public hearing for March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Hello, wasn't me. So, mayor, I have a legal question on these two, if I might. So these are both quasi-judicial law two. We're, we're considering here the one before and this one, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're, we're setting it for initial posting. Does that mean that there's no discussion on this between now and then as well? That's a legal question for you, supposed to, Jeff.
What it means is that as you've already been instructed on the protocols for quasi-judicial matters, those apply to these. So all the bans on ex parte communication, bias prejudice, or conflict of interest in voting, all of those things apply to these matters.
Okay, so that also, so that means from now until two weeks from now, this is, that, that all applies.
Correct.
Because we're not seeing it. So that, does that explain why we're just getting a bunch of written words rather than getting the schematas and getting all of the diagrams and everything else that we normally get?
Is that premise correct, Karen? They're not getting what they already usually get. It looked like a standard packet item to me.
Well, you get a full staff report with the public hearing item.
With the public, but not on the, not on the initial posting?
That's.
Right.
That's my understanding of what's.
Because this is just setting the matter for, for the full hearing and the quasi-judicial proceeding at second reading.
Okay.
Is that responsive?
That works.
Okay, thanks. Good.
The other piece I would add is when somebody wants to chat with you about it in the grocery store, that's where you need to, I would highly recommend.
Yeah, we're, we're familiar with that part. That wasn't my question. Right, that wasn't my question. My question was in terms of the, the content of this compared to what we're going to actually be presented.
Where's the map?
Where's the map?
Yeah.
There you go. Where's the map?
Not here.
It'll be the next thing.
It's kind of a compliment or a courtesy where they have given us a draft of the ordinance, so you can at least read the words around that, but there's no data behind it.
Correct, that's my, that's my question. All right, so it's still basically pending for us as well in terms of.
Yeah, it all has to be presented in one hearing so that everyone has the same opportunity for consideration, testimony, evidence presentation, all of that. That's my understanding.
Yeah, Robert was just wondering where, I'm, I'm assuming, this, sorry, it's an assumption. You were just wondering like where the lot maps were.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's just not there.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance fourteen forty-two, series twenty twenty-three on initial posting as presented, and set the public hearing for March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second it.
I think some of us are visual learners, Karen. So sometimes if you, if you can provide the lot maps, not, not the information, but like a lot map, so people can just know, council can just know like where the thing is, you know what I mean? Sometimes that helps people. Some of us are Temple Grandin-style learners, which is unusual, so.
Thank you, counsel. Motion is passed unanimously, six zero. Thanks, Karen.
All right, we're off to nine. So exciting. We're at nine A, and that's approved ordinance fourteen forty, and is Kip Wiley online? We're at nine A, that's approve ordinance fourteen forty, and is Kip Wiley online? He is. All right.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me? Okay?
We sure can.
Perfect. Uh, before you is ordinance fourteen forty. This is the Twin Lake share. As council will recall, on February sixteenth, uh that you approved on initial posting. Uh, the Twin Lakes share and then in a resolution, a contract to purchase the share. So before you tonight, is that shared and it's the legality of the, since the share is considered real property, we have to accept real property by ordinance. Um, I'll reiterate on the Twin Lake shares, this uh secures our water future, doesn't expand our population. And they are vital to our local water supply because without this water, we cannot use our local water. Um, I'm available for any questions um after the public hearing as well, but we do recommend approval after the public hearing of ordinance fourteen forty.
Counsel, are there any questions or comments on this?
This one, Mayor, we do have to open up for public comments.
How much was the uh cost?
Sixty thousand dollars. Thank you.
I knew that. I just wanted to make sure. Just testing.
And Suzanne, do you have anyone signed up?
I do not.
Okay.
So I'll move to approve ordinance number fourteen forty, series twenty twenty-three, and ordinance approving the purchase of certain water shares.
I'll second.
Thank you, council. You may vote. Thank you, council. Motion is passed six zero unanimously. Thank you, Kip.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
Thank you. All right, item ten, new business. I don't believe we have any. And we're off and running to reports. And I'm going to start with you, Mayor Protam, because I have some announcements, but I don't know where I put them.
So. Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna give you much time. I don't have anything, Mayor. Thank you.
The council member Connors.
You might have said the Saint Patrick's Day parade on the eleventh of March.
It's not on Saint Patrick's Day?
No. We have something else going on that day, I think, with the chamber. But that is all I had. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Council member Nikai.
I don't have anything of much other than the utility advisory committee is meeting next week for the first time and I don't know how long. So the next meeting, maybe I'll have some new information.
Cool. Thank you. Council member Neil?
Let me get the date. I don't have anything for this meeting, but other than to announce the DDA's meeting at seven thirty on. March seventh.
All right, seven thirty, March seventh, right here. Council member Zilawaga.
I do, yes. Um, I actually have something. I have not been able to run it by Keep Woodland Park uh beautiful yet, but I got a phone call today from uh C dot. And uh so I want to put it out to both city staff and to council. Uh, they do a cleanup. They do a um uh C dot cleanup every year and normally they do it on on um Earth Day. But they're pushing it back to May twenty-third this year, so there's no snow and whatever else. So they want to know whether we are interested in participating with them with some volunteers. And what they're suggesting is they cover up to the uh bottom end of town to up to like. Last year they came to Safeway, but they're thinking they come to the bottom end of town and do from Crystal up and then they do. Uh. Where am I trying to say? Up towards Divide, Blueville, uh Blue Bluebird Hill, yeah. And uh some going north on sixty-seven. And that we look to get volunteers to do the inner uh it the the city limits of Woodland Park. And they will provide uh bags, they'll provide collection and vests and hard hats and stuff. So are we willing as a community to do that? Advertise it, put some energy behind it for the twenty-third. Um, and then there was one other part about it, which could be kind of fun. I said, well, do you feed your crews? And I said, no. And I said, well, it'd be kind of cool if you could get all the crews together, uh you know, at a park or something like that. So if we could get. If there's any interest to get some sort of, you know, food provided for all the volunteers and the C dot folks, that could be kind of cool. So I'm just putting it out there. They they talked to me about it today. That's the twenty-third of May. It's a Tuesday. It goes from eight to noon and then uh noon to four.
Okay.
So that, yeah, go ahead.
What date again, please?
Say again.
What date?
A date is May twenty-third. It's a Tuesday, so it's the middle of the week. And they would provide all of the the pickup and stuff and the bags and whatever else. It'd be the first time we'd actually partner with C dot on this um and could be something that happens, you know, on a regular basis. Well, that would be determined right now. We're going to determine if we're going to do it, if we're going to do anything in terms of doing a barbecue or something like that. Um, and and we just need to let them know what sort of numbers so that they could allocate uh vests and hard hats and stuff. But they do have a concern to keep it within the city limits, so they don't have a liability exposure. They call them safety corridors in the seat up, so they have trucks and flashing lights and all that sort of stuff, so. Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Yeah. That concludes my report.
Okay, I I found my list. On uh March fourth, we have a free scout day at the dinosaur resource center. Scouts and leaders in uniform receive free admission from nine AM to four. He is, and that'll be playing at the Ute Pass Cultural Center and showtimes are available on the chambers website. So you can find showtimes and probably ticket information as well for March tenth through the twelfth for the play Steel Magnolias at the cultural center. And then the chambers annual dinner is coming up on March seventeenth. I think that's Saint Patrick's Day, isn't it? Oh, my gosh. At the Cheyenne Mountain Resort, you can buy your tickets now to take part in the event and you can contact the chamber. To reserve your spot. Hopefully they'll make us wear green. I don't know. I'll assume so. You better be. Yeah, Robert will be pinching you at the door if you're not. Okay, and that's all I have for this evening. Does our city attorney have anything? Okay, city manager. Michael, do you have a report for us?
Uh, just an update really on our name the snowplow contest.
Oh, yeah.
We had, that's a big thing. Thank you, thank you to Kristen. Uh, we had a hundred and thirty-one total entries. It's a pretty good turnout. Uh, city staff was working to kind of narrow that down to to twelve. Um, and so we are going to take those twelve and put them out on what's up Woodland Park, yes. Um, for the public to vote on their favorites. So that voting will open this Friday, March third, and will run, this one's pretty quick through March tenth, the following Friday. And we'll announce the winners on March thirteenth and let them know when we may have something for them, for those special winners. And then uh we're excited to start Citizens Academy on Monday, this coming Monday.
Nice. Yeah.
That's always a fun, exciting time. I think it is. If it's not, it's just one or two shy. I think it's full.
Awesome.
Usually it's twenty-five.
Yep, it's a great course. Glad the city offers it. I heard Manitou's gonna start one too.
And Cripple Creek too.
Yeah.
Haven't already.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening. We are adjourned.